Golden, thank you.
I know this is not on the agenda tonight, but I would like to wrap the record to reflect that the people of this town have not forgotten what is happening or trying to be passed under their noses. I find it concerning that Christine Gator, the wife of a trustee who has run on the platform of fiscal conservatism, excuse me, is the author of a citizen petition asking the town to do away with mandatory water restrictions, stating the reasoning that the members of this community are capable of regulating themselves without municipal interference, while simultaneously submitting a core request about the circulation or purchase date of books available in our public library, with the published intention of banning such books because children or their parents do not have the capability of regulating what books are checked out from the library. She authored this petition, but, excuse me, petition, and it is believed she is in support of the other three frivolous citizen petitions that come at a reported cost to the town fifteen thousand dollars each. Additionally, Christine herself was responsible for forty-three percent of core requests from the last report published by the town, many of which were seeking information that would have been made available to the public without wasting valuable taxpayers' dollars and staff hours, hours that are already stretched thin by an exodus of town staff due to the relentless abuse they receive from people such as Christine and her supporters. Our staff, as well as our board of trustees, are continually having to participate in the wild goose chases created by a small yet incredibly vocal number of citizens who seem ill-bent on reversing the moral, cultural, and physical growth of our town. They are doing so at the expense of the community members, volunteers, business owners, staff, and trustees, who are taking an active role in managing responsible growth that is inevitable for this community based on geographic location alone. This reversal includes things such as voter suppression by trying to eliminate mail-in ballots and readdressing the sale of retail marijuana, which was passed by the voting majority of our town. People are starting to acknowledge that what has been happening for the last two years and will no longer sit by and let the silent majority go unnoticed. Thank you very much.
Can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Clayton Graves, three-two-five-five, Bunnery Road Way.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dawn Peacock. I have an ACP, so I don't do the address, but I have written my ACP address down for you.
That's fine, thank you.
So I'm speaking today on the petition for the voting in person only. I did contact the county and spoke with somebody in the election area there and while I need to do some more research on this, initially what I'm finding out from what I, from my conversation was that the in-person voting would only be for the municipality vote. So that means that our citizens would be voting twice. They'd be voting on for county and state, things that come up on the paper ballot, and then they would come in person and have to vote for the municipality, is what I was told. Now, like I said, I will go back and get more information because I know I don't have all the information. This is just the beginning of what I was able to find. It states here that the election should be conducted in person at one of our polling places designated by the municipal governing body. Each polling place shall use paper ballots and the ballot tabulation shall be counted by hand and the count may be verified by a machine with respect to giving notice of all municipal elections by direct mail or by a flyer service to every electorate in town limits. Shall be delivered honor before thirty days preceding the election. So from the census, it shows we have eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-two people estimated as of July twenty twenty-one. We, in the last election, we had two thousand ninety-five ballots or eighteen percent. So that right there is a very low, low percentage. And if people are going to have to vote by, you know, with the, with the typical mail-in ballot for county and state and then in person with, with the town stuff, I find that that could be confusing to a lot of people. Additionally, and this number may be conservative, but I believe there's a number of like at least eighty percent of the people that live in Wellington work outside of Wellington. And there are commute issues, things like that where people may, I know in my neighborhood are leaving at six o'clock in the morning and coming home like six, six-thirty at night. So those people would not be able to, to participate in the live vote. Someone did say that they can do an absentee ballot, but that's kind of defeats the purpose if we're getting ballots in the mail anyway. If you're thinking that possibly eighty percent of the people would be voting by absentee ballot, then why not just do the mail-in vote in the first place if that is what the concern is? And so that's, oh, the, one more thing. There seems to be a lot of problems with Zoom here and there. I was wondering if it might be possible to do audio recordings as well as a backup to put up for when there are things that miss getting established on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda consists of the minutes of August ninth, twenty twenty-two, Board of Trustees meeting. May I get a motion to approve?
Just had a quick question. There was a second that was missing in the original. That was fixed, I believe, in the updated packet. So great.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. I looked at the amended packet and it was there. So I'd like to motion to, actually, did anyone else have anything else before I motion? Okay. I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. May I get a roll call?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teeds?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
All right, next is public hearing for a rezone request from L-one Light Industrial to C-three Mixed Use Commercial on Lot Seven in the Wellington Business Center, Mr. Byrd.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Just a couple of quick housekeeping items. This first agenda item is a two-parter. The first part is a public hearing, and I've included the public hearing procedures in your agenda packet. I'll also go over those tonight, just so everyone in the room and online knows what that procedure is. And then there's a second part, which is the formal action on an ordinance. And so this does have two agenda items associated with it. The first item is the opportunity for public comments. So I just wanted to throw that out there for anyone who wants to participate. And the other housekeeping items, beginning with the public hearing procedures. The first thing is this is a rezone request, which is a quasi-judicial proceeding. On a quasi-judicial proceeding, we have disclosure of ex parte communications and any conflict interest. So if there are any conflict interests can be disclosed, and if you have some, you can recuse yourself. If there are any ex parte communications, meaning communications or information obtained outside of a, of a tonight's public hearing, you can just disclose that, show that information so that everyone on the board has the same information to consider at tonight's meeting. So are there any conflicts or ex parte communications to be reported?
I just want to say that I do know Matt. We used to rent one of the office spaces over in his business park, but I don't think that would cause any conflict for me on this matter.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. So then as a reminder, I'm going to give a brief introduction from staff. The applicant will also have an opportunity to present information. They do have a shortened video that they provided to share tonight, and they have a PowerPoint presentation, so they're going to run that off the laptop here. Then we'll open the public comment portion to the public. Following the close of the public comments, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to those comments. Staff will have an opportunity to respond to comments. And then the board will have the floor to deliberate. Well, excuse me, we'll close the public hearing. Well, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond. Staff will have an opportunity to respond. We'll close the public hearing. Then we'll go to the next agenda item where the board can deliberate, adopt your findings, and take action on it, on ordinance. Any questions on the procedure? Okay, thanks for bearing with me as we work through that. I'm going to share a screen here and give it one minute for a lag. So this is a location map for the, the property that is being considered for a rezone. I know it's small in the back of the room. Hopefully you can see the second screen. So the property that's being requested for a rezone is in the Wellington Business Center. This is along the I-25 Frontage Road on the west side of the Frontage Road. The Wellington Business Center consists of three buildings that are currently probably nearly fully occupied but fully developed for commercial and retail uses. The property that has the, the rezone is approximately six point nine acres in size on the south end of that. South of the property is, the aerial photograph is a little bit older, but this is tract F. It's a stormwater detention pond that serves the stormwater needs of the surrounding basin. The property is currently zoned LI Light Industrial. That light industrial zoning was changed in two thousand and fifteen. And I did include an ordinance in your agenda packet from two thousand and fifteen. The property was previously zoned C-three Highway Commercial. It was zoned to LI Light Industrial in two thousand and fifteen to accommodate what seemed like a pretty specific user with a manufacturing use that the light industrial zoning would have been appropriate for. And for reasons that, that staff doesn't have information on, that development didn't, wasn't completed or concluded, and so the property remains vacant. The applicant, the owner, same owner, is now coming back and requesting the C-three zoning to allow a broader range of the commercial retail mix for this corridor. So that's the location map. It is a zone, a rezone request, and so I wanted to at least share with you, and so this is in your packet as well, but the existing zoning map and highlight that there, there is a discrepancy in the town's official zoning map where that two thousand and fifteen ordinance was approved. It was recorded. It was, it's a valid ordinance, but the official map was not updated at that time. One of the good reasons why we're taking that effort on later to update the town's entire zone map. But this yellow boundary is the approximate location of that Lot Seven Wellington Business Center. The current map does show it as C-three, but it's not reflecting the current lot configuration or the current zoning, which is light industrial. Any questions on the kind of history in the existing zoning? So with that being said, the action tonight is the public hearing. The second item is the board's deliberation in which you'll adopt findings of fact. The planning commission has considered this rezone request in August of this year. The planning commission's findings are included in your agenda packet, and the planning commission did recommend approval by unanimous vote. Staff's recommendation was to approve. The planning commission report and recommendation is in your packet. If you had any questions on those, I'd be happy to respond to those. But I wanted to state that that was the recommendation. And if there are no questions for me regarding what is being requested tonight, I would like to turn it over to the applicant, Mr. Matt Mullet, as the property owner. And if I can do that, I'll let them start their presentation. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with a short video here. I know there's some audio, but it's just a, it's background music. It's good music, but I'm not sure if we can, I can at least play it through my speaker, perhaps. We'll run it without the audio.
That's, that's a good idea. We just don't know how it's all going to work together.
Switch the shared screen.
Yeah, so first of all, I'm Matt Mullet, the original purchaser, developer for the Wellington Business Center. Prior to two thousand and fifteen, I purchased multiple lots and we redid a replat. At that time, the, the, a lot of things different from the town from like it is now, you know, so we had a few plans for Highway Commercial on the north six lots and had a, thought we had a plan or we did have a plan, I guess, for the Lot Seven, which was Light Industrial. So the beginning of all that development was, the, the original intent was the best that we knew at the time. And since, you know, things have changed a lot, even though there's been opportunity for Light Industrial there, but personally, I care about the town and what things look like, and I feel like that part of the town is better suited for Highway Commercial. It changes a little bit how we approach our sales end of things and how we do the deals, but, but ultimately more smaller business, it accommodates. So right now, if we go with the Highway Commercial, the C-three, we can accommodate up to twenty-eight different little shops. So obviously it depends on the size of the shop that comes in, but leaving the, leaving the ability for anything from little businesses to, you name it, restaurants, all the little spaces. And, you know, I hear from being here and living in town that there's people all the time talking about, you know, just the needs. I mean, like, you know, honestly, for myself, there's multiple times you can't even get a certain copy made in town, you know, or there's just so many little things like that. So in restaurants, I mean, you want a breakfast on a, on a, depends on what day of the morning, you, you're stuck with McDonald's or whatever, and I'm not a McDonald guy really, but, so I mean, other people's preferences at all, you know, but there's needs. And these, these needs are smaller businesses that they can't come in and buy multiple million dollar setups and do a little shop, you know, it's just not, it doesn't work that way. But to create a space that lots of little businesses can come in and, and just accommodate them, that's part of this goal. So we'll go through that a little bit here. So in, in the slideshow that we have here now, basically it's about the development of what we want to do there. C-three commercial structures include, like I said, the retail stores, office buildings, restaurants, basically more of the shopping center type of setup. That particular lot, I mean, the zoning would allow hotels, but that's not our goal there. The vacant land has a lot of potential for, for these types of buildings. And ultimately, we have a plan similar to what we did on the north side. So that industrial, light industrial or industrial zonings, which was more manufacturing, more truck traffic, you know, packing, packaging and distribution, storage facilities, you know, chemical products and their storage noise, all these kind of things. You know, back when we did this was a different time. So, but that is how it was zoned, as in the light industrial then. Just, it's a proposed site directly south. I'm, I'm sure most of you guys are familiar with the buildings that are there just on the south side of Anytime Fitness and, and those buildings there. Also, south side of the, the existing street that comes in from the Frontage Road, which is Water Lily. So FRS Enterprises, as a builder of developed property and businesses in Wellington and along the front range. We lived here. We love it here. We absolutely want what is best for the community. We firmly believe in, in that development that the C-three property will bring great economic benefit by boosting tourism, creating jobs, and generating significant tax revenues. Obviously, in, in that development, we have Cushman Wakefield on board with us. They've done lots of, lots of sales in, in the area. And myself as Wellington Business Owner, Business Center Owner, experience, and then we have Daniel, Joseph, and Steve Wimf and Thunderpup Construction, SKU, owner of Aggie Theater. All business people that we want to see spaces in there and make available for others. The short of that, I do have similar, as far as architectural, I just wanted to kind of, you know, very similar to what's there. Even interested in more masonry type of fronts, but we want something really nice. It's not like we're trying to, you know, I don't, I don't, I think that's what's best for the town. So it's not like, it's not like we have a plan for something that barely fits. We want to accommodate the town and, and these businesses. If anybody has any questions, I'd be led to answer.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
I was going to ask you about the architecture of the buildings down there. Are you going to try to stay with the same building design that you got or?
At the least, technically, I, as, right now, I'm redoing some plans. We're expecting, I, I want, the new buildings on the south side are facing north and south instead of east and west like the others are. So, so the buildings on the south side go to north and south, gives us a lot of frontage road exposure on the, on interstate and frontage road, which that whole front we expect to be maybe fully masonry, but definitely very architectural nicer. I feel like nicer than what we have even there.
No questions?
And then I, I'd like to add to more, you know, storefront type of classes and storefronts, like plaza strip type of thing.
Real quick, how many were you saying you were going to try to put in there? Twenty-four businesses? Is that right?
It can be from, depends, so the smallest space is about three thousand square feet. So if there was a, if there was a three thousand square foot user, there could be twenty-eight users there. But obviously, some, some of those will come in with, you know, a bigger use, and so it changes the number of total users. Realistically, maybe half of that. I don't really know. It's a guest.
And you're not looking at doing like office space? It's going to be more retail?
Actually, actually, we do expect some spaces that are, it's a unit that is like office spaces. In, in fact, one of our plans is, is a shared office type of business center. So like a basically, where you could be a part of any business or any local member could be a part of that little club, basically, whether you have your own office, your own conference room, business-related things. So when you talk office, you have offices like that, and then you have everybody's own business office related, yeah.
Trustee Gator? Trustee Teeds?
I don't have a question. I just have one comment, more of a request. When you're planning your sidewalks, making them a little wider so wheelchairs can cruise on by when the doors are open out there.
Actually, that is on a more storefront type of business that is in the plan.
Awesome.
Yeah, I like it. I like seeing that it takes pride in the town and wants to make it better. So kudos to you and who you're working with and getting all that done. So, thank you. At this time, is there any public comment on this agenda item? No? Any additional questions from the board? No? All right, we will now close the public hearing. Does applicant have anything, any further comments? Mr. Byrd, do you have any additional comments? All right, now we have ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-two to rezone at L-one Light Industrial to C-three Mixed Use Commercial District on Lot Seven Wellington Business Center. Mr. Byrd, do you have anything further?
I was just going to introduce it as the, the second item, being the ordinance, just for, for clarity. The ordinance in your packet was drafted for approval. And the agenda, the memo has a couple of options for possible motions. If you don't see the motion on that list that, that the board desires, I or the town attorney can help you craft the motion desired. But for this item, you do need to base your decision off of findings. The planning commission's recommendations and their stated findings are included in your packet. If you'd like, if, if those are meaningful to you, you can state that. If you want to modify them or make your own findings, you can do that as well. The staff memo does identify the findings for approval identified in the land use code that the planning commission staff evaluated and would be a good basis for the board to consider your findings. If you need any assistance with those or have any questions as to what those findings mean, I'm happy to answer those questions and provide assistance.
Thank you. All right, public comment on the land use code were heard during the last agenda item, and the public hearing has now been closed. Is there any discussion from the board on this topic?
I don't think I've got anything real crazy here. Items A through F, just looking at those, I think they're one hundred percent in alignment with what we're trying to do here. Knowing the fact that I, I always go off the big map, so knowing the fact that the big map is not accurate and we're going to get that corrected, I think that's a good deal. So that's all I've got.
Uh, yeah, I do have some comments, and, and those are related to just my kind of general summary of what's before us. So the items that I'm noticing and that are really standing out to me, I have a couple of personal comments, and I'll go into those findings of fact. I'm really excited about the idea of, and given there was no public hearing participation, I wouldn't say that people were opposed to or have strong feelings against the findings of the planning commission. So that's a general statement. But I'm really excited about, you know, when you're going northbound on I-25, entering and seeing manufacturing facilities or storage facilities is not a good look for Wellington. I'm really excited by the fact that someone is interested in providing so many new economic opportunities in our community and giving a better approaching Wellington view and welcoming commercial development. So if anything, it, it looks nicer and it encourages more commercial development. That's fantastic. Also, something our community is really lacking is the opportunity for smaller businesses to thrive. There is no way, and there's only so many door fronts available currently that would house a smaller business. There is no way, um, there's only so many door fronts available currently that would house a smaller business. Um, primarily because and and the alternate would be like building, which is not generally friendly to small businesses. Um, I'm so really excited about the capability of small businesses to thrive in Wellington, and I think that matches the general. Uh, feeling of our strategic plan as well as a comprehensive plan, all the feedback we've received for those. And then the fact that can support multiple business and honestly serve as a catalyst for a community. And okay, so I already said those other items. The items I want to reiterate from the planning commission's findings. Um, and I do take the planning commission's recommendations very seriously as this is their expertise. And given that it was approved unanimously, I think that is very telling. But essentially, um, to reiterate some of my comments that I think align with these and then I would support fully. As regarding the rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And and the the concept that this area would be in in likely would serve a commercial purpose. Um, it's consistent again with strategies of the comprehensive plan. Um, and definitely encourages that diversifying of the town's economic base balancing residential and commercial land uses. I'm reading from the packet, just in case anybody is interested where this is coming from. It's page twenty four of one forty seven. Um, also, the rezone of C three is supported based on compatibility of surrounding properties and surrounding zone districts. So it is friendly and not competing or hurting. Any of the neighboring properties. And then uh, let's see, reduce the impact of large trucks that would be related to industrial. Uh, industrial purposes and that kind of traffic associated with industrial needs. In addition to how it looks, I think that's a big point to make. Um, and then given that this property has been vacant and just nothing is occurring on this land. Obviously, there is a need for change in order to encourage that development in Wellington. Um, and then it mentions again, uh, and reiterates that it's. Supported based on the conformity of the goals, the comprehensive plan and conformity with the Town Board of Trustees Strategic Plan for Development Land Use. Those are the general summary of their feedback, but to go into more detail, I say I agree one hundred percent with each individual. Uh, bullet point and line item of the findings of fact from the planning commission. I wouldn't choose to change any of those at this time. I think all those are accurate and given that we didn't receive any public comment during the hearing, I would um. Note that there is no controversy or strong feelings other than what is is provided as the findings of fact and recommendations from the planning commission.
Yep, so I similarly would agree with the findings of fact. Um, they seem to be consistent. I think it's telling that it was zoned C three previously. Um, so we'd simply be putting it back to where it was zoned before um twenty fifteen. Um, so consistent with that, as trustee Kenny said, we didn't hear any feedback from residents one way or the other, and it doesn't look like any feedback was presented to the planning commission. Either is that a correct statement? There was no public comment or feedback to the planning commission either. It just had said earlier, there was no written, at least written, I don't know if there was verbal. Okay.
The there there have been no written communications presented to town staff at the the planning commission. Public hearing, there were.
Got it. Okay.
A couple of.
That's separate from this because we're not in that. Got it. Great. Um, the only thing that I had, thank you, Mr. Bird, appreciate it. Was. The finding effect number six is zoning rezone is supported based on the conformity with the goals of the comprehensive plan and conformity with the strategic plan. Feels kind of like it's just a repeat of finding number one. So if we did anything, maybe either combine the two of those or just scratch number six since it feels like a repeat. But beyond that, I don't have any problems with the findings of fact that the planning commission shared. So.
Thank you.
I'm in full support of the findings of fact that are presented here. I'm extremely grateful to see the possibility of twenty eight new businesses and office space going in. Um. Yeah, that's all I have.
I'm in full support. Uh, one thing that's going to be kind of neat out of this, it's going to cover up a lot of our housing addition, so we don't look like just a bedroom community at this point. So we actually have businesses that we can attract. So hopefully, it's going to be an extremely positive for. Everything business, residential all. So I'm completely in support. Oh, yeah, no block noise for the residential area over there too. So it's got a lot of positives.
Yeah, hearing no further comments, I would like to seek a motion. Anybody want to tackle this?
I'll give it a shot. I'm not going to read them all. Can we just say A through E in the packet?
There's also suggested motions in the original memo that that would include all of them. Um, I think the findings of fact are bullet points, not the letters.
I I can read them out. That's that's fine.
Sorry, just for for clarity, I I want to make sure I understand the the question. Are you referring to the board's? Needness process to adopt findings?
It'd be the items that are on page twenty two. It's the same ones that Rebecca just.
Right. I what what I heard, and correct me if I if I misheard, but I I feel like I heard support from a couple of different trustees. That the findings of the planning commission were accurate and reflected by the the board. Was that an accurate statement? If if that is the case, then I think for the the portion for adopting the findings is simply stating. That you concur with the findings of the planning commission. If there were any other specific comments that weren't included in that planning commission recommendation, we could add those at the end.
Got it. Got it. In that case, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty two approving C three. Mixed use commercial district zoning for Lot seven Wellington Business Center based upon the board's findings for approval and updating the official maps of the town.
I second.
And the board is in concurrence with the planning commission's finding of facts.
Can we get a second on that?
I second that.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes. All right, the next item is related to amending the town's purchasing policy due to federal grant requirements. Miss Hodeling.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees, Kelly Hodeling, Deputy Town Administrator. Before you this evening is a request to amend our purchasing policy to align with the federal grants requirement. To give a little bit of background for the public and those listening in, um, back in March, we had a site visit from. Colorado Department of Public Safety, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. And that was not an audit, that was a a check in with staff to ensure that we are complying with. Everything that you are required to whenever time, anytime you get federal funding. And so this was directly related to our stormwater master plan. That is currently underway by our engineering staff. So that's where that federal funds and that's why it triggered this initial site monitoring. From the lengthy day, two day long process that we had, there was four findings that they found. With the town that we need to make sure that we have corrective action. And the two that I'd like to speak to tonight, there's the the first two will be amended in our employee, um. Our policies, our guidelines that we have administratively. And so um I have a draft prepared and I've worked with. Um, D H S E M to ensure that it's in compliance with that. So that will get corrected here soon. And then the the two that require the board action, um, are the exclusionary status of vendors and affirmative contracting. And so within your packet tonight, if you go to page fifty seven, that is um. I redlined our current purchasing policy, so you can see exactly what we're proposing to change. Um, and that language is specifically about the verification of SAM dot gov, um, which shows what contractors might be excluded. From bidding on or participating in federally funded projects. Um, so the language is outlined, um, and again, it's. I I did pass this by them and they're okay with the language that we have. It's rather standard. And so there's no issue there. Um, and and that's just a good process to ensure if if a contractor, maybe they worked on another federal project and it and it didn't go well and they didn't use the funds properly. It's a very serious. Issue. It's um, and I think trustee Gator asked that last time is how how serious is it? It is rather serious. Um, so that's just, you know, within the purchasing policy, um, it's outlined on that page on fifty seven uh within your packet. And we also listed that this would be for any large contract that we're working on because that's probably a good practice. If someone was barred from working on a federal grant. Let's make sure then that they're not doing the work in our town if they weren't um approved in other places either. So we've got that language in there. And then the next one is listed on page fifty seven of your packet. And that is for affirmative contracting, and that's to ensure that any small minority or women owned business enterprise. Um, are used when possible for applying for federal grants. So that's not for every project that we're working on. But there does need to be a process in place if we do receive federal grant funding. Page fifty nine. Yep. Are there any questions that the board may have?
Just to get her.
Yes, um, I know you'd mentioned with the SAM wording that you could run that by them and they were good. Did we run all of the other proposed and they were good with everything that we have in there?
Yes, exactly.
Perfect. Um, no, I I think it's good. I know I tend to be one who's not a huge fan of um affirmative. I used to work in construction years ago, so I understand how that works. And I actually appreciate the the language that we have here where it says we're going to make sure we're going to reach out to people, let them know, make sure the work is broken down into. Um, you know, sizes that they can work on, but really focuses still on those businesses still have to come in and bid the work and, you know, put in the work for that. It's not just handed to them, but it's made available to them and options for them. So I appreciate how that's put together. So. Um, I, as long as the wording is in the red line, which I see there, I have no issues with it. So looks good. Thank you.
I just want to verify, this is only for those that take federal funds or is this a standard? For the town of Wellington now where we're going to mimic this form.
For the affirmative contracting piece, that's uh just for grant funded projects.
Got it. Thank you.
I know we have to do it and I'm glad we got to the stuff in place right at the moment and we're all compliant right now, correct?
After assuming the board adopts it, yes.
Um, just one quick thing, uh, as far as the, I know there were a couple of other requirements such as setting up a P I I policy and that sort of thing. Those will be coming later, I presume.
That is done administratively and yeah, and that's all been approved by D H S E M. No additional comments. It looks like we're meeting those requirements. So I appreciate the updates. Thank you.
Yeah. I think we need to get it done. Are there any public comment on this agenda item? No, okay. Any final comments from the board? No. Hearing no further comments, I would like to seek a motion.
I move to approve the draft language and the revised purchasing policy.
All second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes. All right, now we are on to resolution number thirty one dash twenty twenty two. Authorizing the purchase of property from from North Pooter Irrigation Company for the town of Wellington Water Treatment Plant, Miss Smith.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Um, before you this evening is a resolution to, um, as you just spoke. Authorize the purchase of property from North Pooter Irrigation Company for the town of Wellington's water treatment facility. So staff executed the negotiations of the terms that are in this proposed purchase contract and the amendment. Um, to that nineteen eighty three agreement at the consensus and direction of the board. Do you mind if I close this door? I'm sorry.
How about it?
Thank you. Apparently easily distracted. Um, now, the board is very aware of the history of this item, but I do want to provide some background um and context for our community members. So the town does currently lease the site of our existing water treatment facility as well as the additional area for the side of our needed expansion. Through two separate agreements. Uh, we're leasing five point two three acres um as part of what we refer to as the nineteen eighty three agreement. And then we have an additional lease for approximately three point three five acres for that expansion area that's needed for our treatment plant expansion. Now, that original land lease um. Is again included in that eighty three agreement, but this additional lease was secured just earlier this year uh in April, I believe. Um, in order to allow for the expansion project to start on time on on schedule, and it did. So that nineteen eighty three agreement, as I mentioned, um, it does also include. Terms around which the town of Wellington currently receives the bulk of our raw water supplies. Now, the terms in that agreement will be amended. As part of this purchase, um, and those those terms that will be amended are really in relation to. What the town is allowed to do with the property because we'll now own it. We won't be leasing it. Um, and then also to the administrative fee that the town pays um on that water that we use annually. Now through, uh, again, through the staff negotiations with North Pooter. Um, and at the the consensus and direction of the board, um, those negotiations really began in earnest in September, September of twenty twenty one. Uh, so going on a year now. And the town is proposing the following terms, and I'm going to kind of read through these as they're listed in the the memo um that's in your packet. Uh, the North Pooter Irrigation Company will deed two parcels of land to the town totaling ten point five acres. The town will transfer four shares of North Pooter Irrigation Company stock back to the company. The town will acquire two pipeline easements from North Pooter, one for the raw water intake facility. Uh, uh, to the the main water treatment facility, and then one for the intake pipes from the wild water facility that go out into reservoir number three. The seven percent fee that's listed in the agreement will be reduced to one point five percent. And then a couple of terms that were also addressed in the lease agreement that are are wrapped into this contract purchase is that North Poodle will abandon and access easement. That's along the north side of the water treatment facility. And the town will build a gravel access road for North Pooter. On their property along the south edge of the water treatment plant to allow them access to property on the west of the water treatment facility. Now, by purchasing this property, um, this will remove um the lease of property from that eighty three agreement. Um, and it's proposed that the the fee will be reduced, we're proposing the fee be reduced from seven percent to one and a half percent. And just for some context, had that change been in place in twenty twenty, the town would have saved approximately seventy three thousand dollars. Um, in our annual water purchase that year from from North Pooter. Staff actually estimates that moving forward, that annual savings will likely be closer to about eighty thousand dollars. Um, there are other variables that impact that that dollar figure, but. We believe that we would fully recoup those costs um of of the of the purchase within about twelve years. Um, of executing this agreement and these changes. Now, staff does understand there has been um some public inquiry regarding the term of exchanging North Pooter shares uh for the property purchase. Um, I do know some of this has been in regard to the availability of North Pooter shares and that it's um. The concern about the town divesting itself of our current share ownership. Um, we do understand that concern. I do want to highlight, though, that North Pooter shares do exchange hands on a very regular basis. As a matter of fact, the town purchased outright um five shares just earlier this calendar year. Um, and there are transactions that take place, you know, weekly, for sure, monthly um through the company. Um, we do believe this arrangement does make good business sense. Um, and it it also meets the goals of securing property. For our water treatment facility, which we don't currently have. And then also reducing annual costs related to our raw water supplies. Now. Um, should the board uh uh move to approve the purchase contract, the proposed purchase contract? Staff would then present this proposed contract to the North Pooter Board of Directors at their next regular meeting, which is scheduled for September fourteenth. And then uh should their Board of Directors agree to the proposed terms, um. We can then move to execute that purchase contract and move to to set a closing date that would then be set actually based, excuse me, but based on the timing. Of the completion of the minor land division process that we're currently executing with Laramore County right now. So with that, I do want to see if the board has any questions for me. But I can answer.
Um, thank you, Megan. I think you did a great job. Um, a couple of questions to then, as you mentioned, a lot of people have been asking about the shares of water and. Um, by give me by trading or selling some of these shares, would that reduce our capability to provide treated water to the town? My understanding from the nineteen eighty three agreement is while you mentioned we just bought five shares, we do have in excess. Our current agreement with North Pooter does not allow us to turn those shares into treated water. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and so by taking these four shares and then giving us out as things currently said, I understand we could. Change agreements down the road, but that's not going to decrease the amount of water that we can actually send through our water treatment plants.
As of today, correct.
I think those are the only questions. I know that there's been, as you mentioned, September of twenty one, um, that this has been ongoing. And so I think that I. Appreciate the work that staff has put into this and I know we've been working and appreciate North Pooter working with us and hopefully we've been able to come to. A place that's in agreement that works for both sides and I definitely want to hear some of the things, if they're members of our community, I'd like to hear their input as well.
Just a few. How many shares do you know of that have been available, say in the last two years for this water?
Um, I know there, there was a transaction of thirty-six shares that changed hands about two weeks ago.
Okay, so just, sorry, go ahead.
No, just, I mean, for example, as far as just most recently. But I, I attend their board meetings monthly and there's, I've yet to attend a board meeting in the year that I've been here where there hasn't been a transaction that's taken place in the previous thirty days.
Got it. So it's safe to say that if we wanted to purchase water shares or increase those shares. We would do what? Sorry, I'm just trying to. Get the information out there. So if people do have questions, we're getting it answered.
I'm not sure I understood the question.
So say I want to purchase a water share. As the town, say I want five shares. Can I show up and just purchase five shares?
You would need to find someone who is looking to sell.
Got it. So it can't just be easily walk up, purchase the five shares and be on my way. You have to find someone who's willing to sell or trade the shares. Got it.
Correct.
That's my only question.
So it's, excuse me. So it sounds like they're stocks of a closed company, right? So a limited amount of stocks?
Yes.
And the accessibility is when it's available.
Correct.
Question, you said we bought five shares this spring?
Yeah, in January, February, we closed.
What should we pay for that?
We paid two hundred and five thousand dollars per share. For that purchase.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions, I don't think, but I did want to just make sure we get a couple of things out there for the public. I think we own roughly seventy-seven shares currently.
Correct.
And to be clear, just as the comments that trustee Gator made earlier, those, those shares cannot be turned into potable water. The North Pooter Agreement allows us for two thousand acre feet per year. With addition of the four hundred acre feet that we have provided by the city wells that we own. We use approximately eleven hundred acre feet a year currently. So obviously, you know, we're going to remain highly focused on that and make sure that once. When these things go down the road, as we do prepare to renegotiate some of these things and. We'll, we'll be looking at that actively, but I just wanted to make it clear for everybody that the seventy-seven shares that we own are not potable water.
Trusty Kenny.
The portion of this conversation, I think that is a super essential and part of the. Financial equation for this is the, the portion for the seven percent to the one point five percent for the maintenance being leasing of the land. In, I understand and realize that is a significant amount of money that we would look. Forward to in saving every year forever. So long as this agreement is in place. So. I do want to acknowledge that because in addition to actually paying for and, and receiving the land that will, of course. Our most valuable asset for the entire town. Lives on this land. It makes sense that we would own it. Just for that confidence, of course, and given the fact that we will. See such significant saving. Every year going forward. So I just wanted to draw light to that a little further.
For clarification on that administrative fee, the seven percent, is that, was that number used in the calculation for the current utility bill increase? So is that number, that seven percent administrative fee that we're charged for the delivery of that water? Is that calculated into that complicated formula for? Our water utility bill, is that?
For, for how we set our water rates?
Yes.
It, it is included as the overall raw water costs. So yes, it is included and is.
So in theory, through this action, we would have the potential or we would be taking direct action that would actively or potentially. Reduce that utility rate or at least stabilize it moving forward.
It would have a direct impact on the, our annual expenditure for our raw water costs.
Thank you.
You guys have put a lot of work into this and you guys are rock stars. So thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Sean Shednham, seven zero four nine Grassley Range Drive. Cash is king. We've all heard that phrase. So why not just pay outright on this? I mean, unless the seller land knows something that Wellington doesn't. I mean, why not take the cash outright? You know, we could get the land, but we give up some future potential rights. And yeah, they're trading right now, but at some point, they not, may not be tradable. People may not want to give it up. If you look west over the Rockies. There's battles going on over water right now. It's a scarcity. Don't give up even a small chisel amount, four shares out of seventy-seven. That's just the first chisel stroke. What's next? I mean. Without water, you don't have life. So we would essentially be trading away some of Wellington's life right there. If people are upset about raw water rates now, what's going to happen when water is even more of a scarcity with rates? Have you ever seen a movie where you've got a car out of control, going down a big hill, approaching a river where? There's a bridge that's just, it's been taken out by floods. And there's that guy at the bottom screaming at everybody, stop, stop, stop. Well, as citizens, that's us screaming right now, stop. Don't go over that bridge. You're the driver of this car and the future generations. Of Wellington are the passengers of that car. So please take heed. Now we also have that same four shares. I don't know if the town of Wellington has considered selling surplus water. Not the shares, but on annual contracts. I've been involved personally with a lot of those contracts. To the West. And it can be pretty lucrative. And if you're worried about these additional fees, Wellington can actually recoup a lot of those fees by selling the excess water. Rather than selling the water shares. Again, cash is king. Why don't they want to just take cash outright? It's because it's going to get a lot harder to acquire, really is. So please. Try to amend this and remove the water. As part of that trade. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Mayor. I wasn't intentional about speaking tonight, but I feel very led to do so. As someone who has gone to water auctions and watched the trading of water, I do understand what a valuable resource it is. I am a advocate for water conservation. I do believe that it is a life-giving resource. However, I have also seen what happens when an entity does not own the land that they are dependent upon. And I would caution us as a town to believe that. Trading of water that it will not be life sustaining to us in the form of potable shares. In order to hold on to some lease agreement for our property that our new plant is being built on would be a travesty. What happens when they decide they want to use the land for something else? We have put how many millions of dollars into this plant that we would then have to move or tear down? That seems to me like a huge waste of cash. And something that could detrimentally affect and wipe out this town, to be completely honest. So to have any kind of reservations about this particular deal seems like. A frivolous argument for the sake of arguing honestly, in my opinion. And I would like to thank those that have been involved in the negotiations. And the past board for putting this in motion because I think it is imperative that we own that land. And that we continue to move forward and secure Wellington's future. Versus trying to argue ourselves into a hole, just for the sake of arguing. Thank you.
Do I know what to speak again since I spoke before?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank your, your name again, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dawn Peacock. So I do want to thank the board. I know how hard it has been over the last few years when it comes to the water treatment plant. You guys got handed a really bad set of situations. And you have turned it around. You have built, you know, you're, you're building the water plant. I know this is controversial. I mean, I love the fact that. Ms. McDonald said it could possibly even help with water rates. I really do believe that this is the right thing for the town. It may not be popular, but sometimes. You know, popularity isn't the issue. So by being able to secure that land in our name. Without having to worry about the price going up, it's like real estate prices are going down, you know, lately. I just, I just feel it's a great move. So thank you.
Karen Neifert, I live in the Knowles. I wanted to go over something that. Trusty Mason was just saying it's seventy-seven, is that what she said? That are. Sorry. That is not that, that, that's irrigation water, is that what you're saying? And it's not non-potable waters up? As out, I think that's what she meant. Anyway, I wanted to say, even if it's not drinking water right now, just as you're going back to. North Pooter Irrigation Company for other negotiations. Those same shares can be negotiated to go back to being able to treat that water of those shares. Right now it is not, but that does not stop the town of Wellington from going back to North Pooter Irrigation Company. With negotiations, along with the other negotiations that are going on with that company and saying, hey, we'd like to know. What we can do, what needs to be done for these seventy-seven shares to be able to go through our water treatment plant and support our town of Wellington. And. The town person that spoke, Megan, she also talked about how we bought five shares. Back in January or February of this year, and I'd just like to point out that is one million, one million forty thousand dollars that we spent. And it would be really great. I think in my opinion. If, I understand that some of this stuff has to go on an executive session. But I think along with this presentation that was given today so gratefully by Megan. I think the town should be able to have access to know what the other options are as well. The only one that's being presented to the town residents is this one. And I know that there is other, other things that you guys have weighed. I've been here through every executive session you have, sometimes past ten o'clock at night, and I know you guys have been working on this for a very long time. And I'm grateful you've been working on it, but I really feel like it's an injustice to the town of Wellington residents. To just say, oh, we've picked the best option, we swear. And this is what's going to happen, either yes or no on this. I really think it'd be appropriate to be able to share with the town of Wellington residents, hey, we've considered option A, B, C, and D. And the board really feels that option A is what we should go with. But communicate with the town of Wellington. I mean, you guys put out polls for Fourth of July, you put out polls for. Flooding in our streets and all different kinds of things. So I'd really like to see that information come out to the town of residents, the town residents. So we can be able to view that as well. And yes, we sure did. We voted for all you guys. We put you into the office. We trust you. But. I mean, it's the same thing as would you take a two-week-old puppy and. You know, leave him at somebody's house that you don't know and hope they live and they feed them and they do everything you just write? You might want to be able to come check in. And I think that's what the town of Wellington residents deserve as well. We deserve to be able to be able to check in and be like, hey, what are those other options? Can you communicate with the town of Wellington? Everybody that's new on the board ran on the promises of, we're going to have open communication. We're going to be transparent. And that's every single, every single one of you that are new on the board. And I remember that from. Miss trustee Gators as well. I don't remember when you ran, I'm sorry. But I just. If you're going to say you're going to be open and give that information and that you're going to be inclusive and you're going to include everybody and what's going on and that transparency. Then it's time to do it because it seems like this all happened backdoor, which people have that perception because they haven't been at these meetings for all this time. But honestly, I've been in meetings all this time and you guys talked about those in executive session where I can't be. So I really like more access for the town of Wellington residents. Thank you.
I'm currently in favor of this plan. And I think it's so essential again for us to own the property with our largest, most expensive asset on it. And just secure. Water and everything related to water for our residents. I think that is. Right now, one of the first and most important priorities for this board. And it's been one of our top priorities for a very long time, so.
Thank you. Trusty Gator.
Yes, so I did want to thank everyone who came out and spoke and shared your thoughts and concerns with us and. I know that there, as you mentioned, Ms. Eifert, there were a lot of conversations that were had. We did look at options as was asked about, did you look at cash? That was something that was considered. On top of the fact that was shared that that additional seventy thousand could help with sharing the rates if we had to go the other route and come up with a million dollars of cash. That would probably have had most likely the exact opposite effect on rates and would have driven rates up. And so that was something that was considered by the board. And it was looked at as whether it was an option. And again, as our current contract stands, being in the situation where those shares that we have are, they are for lever, they are leveraged and can be used for negotiations, but they cannot be turned into. Drinking water at this moment until that contract is negotiated. And I feel that I'd love to see ways that we can improve how we can communicate things. Negotiations are hard. There's a reason they're an executive session. But anyways, we can improve that in a town, I think would be really good to look into. But I do think that I agree, we ideally would have owned the land twenty years ago, but hey, we're, we're where we are today and I think that we do need to look at that. And I think that there are some concerns about, yes, will this put us in a potentially worse situation down the road? It's, it's a possibility. But I think that when we look at where we're at right now, our residents have already had to carry a huge burden the last two years with. Past problems with our water and rates and things like that. And this was a way that allowed us to say, okay, we've got. Other resources that we can trade versus cash that can help us to get what we need to have accomplished. It doesn't put us in a situation where we think we're not going to be able to come out of it and it allows us to do that in a way that hopefully is most beneficial to the residents as well. So I think that. I appreciate the thoughts that were shared. I do feel like this is moving in a direction I think that we should continue on.
Thank you, trustee. Trusty Teets.
This one was a hard one for me because I was probably the most against this through our executive sessions. I want to say that trustee McDonald actually explained it very well in our last executive session. When she was describing to me that the seventy-seven shares cannot be turned into potable water unless we were to try to go to water court. But my, my base and finding from this was the fact that this. Having this go forward opens up a possible door to have continued conversations. About the contract in general was my understanding. So it's like an, and good faith understanding of being able to work with. North Pooter. Also, the four shares, it is a lot. It's four units a share. So you're looking at thirteen acre feet depending on. The year that they choose for that allocation. So. I was against this when we'd started the conversation about it and then learning more about it and how detrimental it is. I would and do support moving forward with this, the route we're going.
Thank you.
When I heard today that we had just bought the five shares earlier this year, that was probably a pretty good investment process at that point. You know, we bought it at what, two oh five per share? I think they're worth two fifty now, or twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand right now, which we're using it for the purchase. So these things are a transferable asset. To my knowledge, as way I've been, I'm not an expert at this. I'm hoping that, you know, we got good leadership that's explaining this stuff. But again, you know, we need to own the land, of course. I mean, that just makes sense. You never want to be leasing. The land you're putting a whole bunch of money on top of there. And it sounds like too, I mean, this is a very fluid thing that we've been doing. I mean, what did I hear? I mean, what did I hear over the last twenty, thirty years that we've acquired thirty-some-odd shares in that period of time? And this is something, I think every time we get a new addition coming in, hopefully we're acquiring their shares, right? Okay, so these things are things that we're going to be building upon at this moment. I know initially when we were talking about it, you know, I had a good friend of mine that was on the water board down in Four columns, he said, the last thing you should ever do is get rid of, rid of water shares. And, uh, but, you know, they, I think they're in a little different situation than what we are. But, uh, you know, with it being so fluid like it is, uh, and with ours, you know, we've increased quite a bit over the years and it looks like we are, as more we grow, the more we're going to, uh, obtain at that point. So, and you were saying earlier, we don't have the cash right now really to buy it, but we had to cash earlier this year when we bought the five shares. So it's again, kind of transferring from one pocket to another pocket at that point. So I think it makes sense, uh, and in favor of it.
Thank you Patty and Kelly for having the opportunity to sit in on the hiring process for Megan. And thank you Bob for all of your hard work in this negotiation and for working with Megan. And Megan, thank you for joining the team and taking on this extremely difficult negotiation. And I'm not sure that people understand the weight of the decision that's going to be made tonight because opening the nineteen eighty-three agreement has been extremely difficult. It's been attempted by many boards. And this is the first time that we're really opening it up and changing elements that are going to benefit our citizens directly. So not only are we going to own the land that our multi-million dollar asset is going to sit on, we're going to reduce this administrative fee that's going to have a direct impact on our citizens. And we're opening this nineteen eighty-three agreement that's going to have a long-term impact on how we provide quality water services to the community. Thank you so much for your hard work in this negotiation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trustee Mason.
No, I think I'm good. I'm just going to reiterate, you know, this is critical infrastructure and, and we need to get it done. Uh, just to, to point out what Trustee Gator said earlier, you know, we, we did offer cash. We significantly lowered the amount of shares that they wanted in the first place. Um, so I would just say, you know, I, I think this is a great deal and let's get it done.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Everybody. Um, yeah, no, this, uh, just like Mayor Proton McDonald said, this, this opens the door for further negotiations, which is going to be huge for us moving forward, um, for the town, for the citizens, all of us, um, to save money and, and for this town to grow and do prosperous things. So, uh, yeah, I'm all for it. Um, hearing no further comments. I would like to seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-one, twenty-two, authorizing the purchase of property from the North Pooter Irrigation Company for the town of Wellington Water Treatment Plant as presented in the packet by staff.
Second.
May I get a roll call, please?
We have opportunity for additional comment after the motion.
Oh.
I might have, I might have missed that on your script.
Oh, it's okay. Um.
We're trying.
I just wanted to make a quick clarification. So if people are wondering, well, they just had money to buy water shares at the beginning of the year. When we have that money, it is restricted funds that can only be used to purchase water shares. So for example, even if we've got, I don't know, somewhere between eight to ten million dollars in that account, we could not use those funds to purchase the land. So those funds would have had to come out of the non-restricted funds, which are the ones that come from the fees that you pay. So while we did spend a million dollars or something around that earlier this year buying shares, that was from restricted funds. So if you're not wondering like, oh, you've got tons of money sitting around. It's not sitting around. It is only for purchase of water share. So I just wanted to clarify that because that could have been confusion and people like, what?
Yeah, that was good clarification.
One thing.
Sure.
So clarification number five on the contract agreement. The Board of Trustees authorizes mayor to execute the proposed purchase and sale agreement in its current form or if additional modification is required. Will that not come back to the board then for further decision? Is that how that contract is written?
The language that's in the resolution, the, the intent there is to authorize the mayor to ex, if this is executed tonight, if this resolution passes tonight, it's essentially a proposal that goes over to North Pooter. North Pooter's board will consider this and the intent of number five there, the way it's worded is authorize the mayor to execute the proposed purchase and sale agreement in its current form. Or if additional modification is required in a substantially similar form, including all material terms as discussed herein with approval by the town attorney. That language is intended to mean the mayor can execute this or a very, very similar version of this with miter, minor contract changes that don't have a material effect on the actual terms. That's what that's intended to be. So if they have tweaks to the contract, that'll go through their attorney, that'll come through us. We'll evaluate those, discuss them with the mayor. If they are considered to not have a material change on the contract, so it is substantially similar, um, then this would authorize the mayor to sign that. So it gives a little bit of wiggle room, where you're authorizing the big picture contract, not necessarily these exact words. They might have to change through this process. That's what that's meant to be.
But not the amount of shares we're offering or any of that contractual stuff?
I, I would consider the, the amount of, amount of shares, the seven percent to one point five percent, the acreage, the, all of the things that have been discussed tonight are absolutely material terms to this contract.
Okay.
So we're talking about changing a word or two is essentially, i- if it, there's more than that, then that would absolutely come back to the board.
No further comment? Okay, now I would like to seek a motion.
Already got your motion.
Oh, yeah. Let's, Megan, roll call, please.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Proton McDonald and a second by Trustee Gator. Um, roll call on the vote, Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the, uh, last item is resolution number thirty, twenty-two, declining full participation in the Colorado state-run paid family and medical leave insurance program. Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Stephanie Anderson, HR manager. So I am here to discuss Colorado state-run paid family medical leave insurance program. I am going to refer to the family medical leave insurance program as family. That is the abbreviation that it's known by. So back on June fourteenth of this year, I did come to the board during a work session to present items and kind of give a background around what family leave is. So this is a brief refresher for everybody here. So in November of twenty twenty, Colorado voters approved proposition one eighteen that would start a paid leave program for workers in the state of Colorado. So family leave provides people with twelve weeks of paid leave per year to care for themselves, a family member during life events, and this could include a serious injury, a serious illness, pregnancy, adoption, a lot of different items could fall into that life event. So participating employers and employees do fund this program by submitting point nine percent, so zero point nine percent of all the salaries that we pay to the state. So that point nine percent is split between the employer and the employee, each paying half of it. So point four or five percent would go to the state from employees. Point four or five would come from town funds to the state. So how this program works is it will start collecting funds from, um, all the employers and employees on January first of twenty twenty-three. And then it goes into effect as of January first, twenty twenty-four, where people can actually utilize this leave time. Um, so an employee, if they are receiving pay through this program and they are on leave, they would receive between thirty-seven to ninety percent of their salary with a cap at one thousand, one hundred dollars per week. Um, during this program. So as a municipality, we do have an option to opt out of this program. Colorado Municipal League or CML, they did initiate a survey with municipalities in the area. And it did find that most other municipalities are opting out or leaning towards opting out. So of the sixty-eight that were surveyed, um, fifty-one decided to opt out or are leaning toward opting out. So it really is a popular decision to not go with this program at this time. So we do want to make sure though that we are still offering a good program for our staff to help retain them, give them good options for leave when they have their own family or personal emergency as well. So in place of the state program, the town is proposing a program that would still grant the twelve weeks of paid leave to all staff members at their normal wages, so not capped at that thirty-seven to ninety percent. And it would also alleviate the town from having to send towns money that we'd have to budget for and our staff's money to the state, running this in-house kind of program. So we did send a notice last Monday, the sixteenth, to staff members to kind of see if people had any comments, concerns, and also to address people that we were bringing this to the board for a vote tonight. And I have not heard any, anybody that was hoping we were not going to opt out of this program. So the resolution that is presented to you tonight in the packet is a resolution to opt out and it would decline full participation within the plan. And if staff members though still want to opt in, they do have that ability to do so. They would work directly with the state. They would submit their own payment to the state to be opted into the state-run program. But we in town will still be running, uh, similar or better program for town staff. So one other piece I wanted to bring up is that if we do opt out and decide later we want to opt in, we can opt back into the plan in three years. And if we want to opt out and we remain opt out, we will have to opt out every eight years. So I wanted to open it up for any questions.
Start with, uh, Trustee Wiegand.
I'm glad we're opting out on it, uh, less, uh, government intervention, the better on that. So I think you guys are making a good decision.
I, I do have a couple of statements, more so than questions, because I'm, I'm familiar with the figures. It, it was brought to my attention, of course, that as this is a state initiative, it was, um, very significantly passed by the, um, the voters to approve and enforce the, the, this program. Um, so my question here is that, uh, by choosing to not participate in this program, we are essentially doing, uh, opposing the will of the voters. Um, I just, I want to bring attention to this, how I feel about it and the, the certain budgeting for it. Um, I do have just a few of those considerations and questions. So that is something I want to bring to light. Um, the other part of it too is you did mention as a municipality, we have the option to opt out versus private businesses do not. So, um, essentially, again, we're, we're, we could potentially be proving something that is against the will of the voters. A, and B, puts us at an, puts us at a, uh, advantage versus private businesses. So between those two pieces, I think those are considerations just to be aware of, um, and make sure that we, we understand exactly what opting out means. Um, I say this just as a proponent of voting matters. Um, and I, I'm a big believer of that. So when a measure is brought before voters and they overwhelmingly, significantly, um, approve something, uh, it should be taken with significant importance. Um, so I do want to bring those items up. Uh, let's see, the other part of this, I think, uh, that hasn't been brought up as well is that um, employees as part of this program then carry the credits associated with this leave. Um, the monetary value is my understanding. So if and when an employee would leave the town of Wellington and perhaps work for a different private organization, um, they would not leave with the, essentially the credits associated with that, that they would have been contributing to, and then the town would have been contributing to up to that point. Uh, so that may potentially, and you know, I don't know how significant this would be, um, on employees individually, but it could potentially put them at a disadvantage. Now, with that said, of course, there's always the option for individuals to opt in. So, um, I, I can't say that that is a for sure um, disadvantage for employees of Wellington if we were to pass this. But it is a consideration because their, their contribution would essentially be double what it would be otherwise if we were to opt in. So these are just points I wanted to, to bring to light because I think it's worthy of understanding the entire, the entire item. And I really thank, um, the community for bringing these items to my attention because there's something, some of the things that I wasn't, um, giving any value to, uh, up to this point. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Trustee Gator.
Uh, just to clarify, um, sorry. Ms. Anderson. Um, you said, I was just, I think I understood what you're saying. No one came to you hoping we would opt out? I was a little confused. So no employees came to you or gave feedback that they hoped that we would opt in? Or I'm just trying to make sure I understand what the feedback was from the employees?
Correct. So we did let them know that we were bringing a resolution to opt out and nobody was concerned with the decision to opt out if it is what is decided on.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure because it was, it's like opting out and opting in. Um, overall, I think that, I, I appreciate very much, Ms. Anderson, bringing together what we are planning to do. Um, and I'm not familiar with what was approved by the voters in terms of that. I know obviously if there is an option for government to opt out, I would assume that that was part of what was put together um, and what was put in place. Um, the other thing I believe that you mentioned, we were going to be offering the twelve weeks at full pay. Um, whereas the state program would be at a percentage of pay. So already in that standpoint, if the voters approved something, I would assume that that was their desire was to make sure people had paid leave. And if we're going to be offering a better paid leave than what is being offered by the state, I don't have a concern that we're going against what the voter's intention was, even if we might be utilizing a different program. Um, I also would agree with Trustee Wiegand. Um, the less levels of administration that are involved in that, the better I think it will function. So having our local staff manage our program for our local employees, I think would be much better than having state staff manage a program for our local employees. So I think that that would be good in that sense. So, um, while I'm sure we could just choose to opt out, I appreciate that our staff has come up with a plan for what we can provide to our employees so that it's still a good position for them. So I think that this is the right direction and obviously in future, if future boards feel differently, they have the option to come back and change that. And then our employees also have the option, if they want to opt into the state program, to do so as well.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
So clarification on this. So an employee comes to you as HR director and says, I need to have four weeks vacation paid. They can go directly to you, they deal with you face-to-face if need be. If they were required to deal with a government entity, would they be dealing with the government entity face-to-face?
So they're still putting together all the specific details with the program. But what the webinars are telling us right now is that the employees would work contact directly with the state. So I'm not sure if it would be through an online portal, which is what people will be required to set up if they opt in by themselves to submit those requests. And then the state works directly with the town to let us know that somebody is eligible, is going on leave.
Got it. Thanks.
I don't have anything. Um, is there any public comment regarding this agenda?
Evening. My name's Aaron Genova. I live over in, uh, Wellington West over here. Uh, it seems like you guys have had a little trouble keeping people, employees, it is. I don't know why you would make these changes, why you opt out of this, the voters, as we discussed. They want it. Uh, I get a little worked up about this kind of stuff because I'm, I'm a labor person, but, uh, you know, HR can usually just unilaterally change rules whenever they feel they want to. I don't know how many weeks you made available to your employees before. Um, probably wasn't twelve. Now you have a little competition from the government that says it needs to be. Great. Now you got twelve weeks. Don't know if that's going to be in writing, uh, for your employees. And I don't know when you'll decide to unilaterally make that change another direction, when it suits you. You may not have had much feedback from your employees when you had sent them the letter. But employees don't typically go back to HR and say, hey, uh, we're concerned. They just, they just don't. Employees, um, usually are nervous about speaking to their employers. So they don't go pounding on your doors and tell you what they really think. That's just the way it is. I guess that's about all I have.
I guess that's about all I have. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any final comments from the board? Start with Mason.
No, honestly, I don't see any downside stops out opting out of this. I mean, the fact that employees are able to opt in if they want to, I think that's a big deal. And obviously the fact that our time off currently is in line with what the state's proposing here. I, I would agree with trustee Gator. I don't know that the state is the best entity to be able to. Run this type of program. And I think the staff is fully capable. So let's let them do it. And.
I brought up the points I did just to offer some additional insight on, on the consideration, but to be honest, considering. I, I feel that there is a compelling package that is being provided by the town. And I do think it is above and beyond those minimum requirements. I do understand the concern of future changes and how those might not be necessarily protected. From the state perspective, but the point of bringing up that we do have significant competition and meeting or beating that is. Would be a goal for retention of our employees, which is one of the items in our strategic plan. So I am confident that this board would hold accountable any future changes to any HR. Guidelines to ensure that those minimums that are above the family offerings continue to exist. So. I think that there is, of course, in the back of my head, always I understand the voters. And I understand the intent of the voters was to protect employees and their rights. So given that we have taken that and improved on those rights and benefits. I, I am comfortable and I feel like we are then enforcing the will of the voters. So I am in, in favor of. Approving to opt out, approving a negative. That's hard to understand, but I do, I do want to make that clear, but I had to bring all those items to your attention as well.
Thank you. Trusty Gator.
No, I, again, other comments, appreciate staff looking into this and coming back with an option that really puts a good place for our employees. And again, just reiterate, I think that it would be best for us to manage as much as we possibly can at the local level. And just keep it here, keep it Wellington and make sure that we're be able to meet the needs of our, our employees here. So.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
No, I don't have anything.
Just a weekend.
One thing that we got to take notice of is. The survey consisted of sixty-eight municipalities, fifty-one already opted out. So this is an uncommon for a municipality to do. Also too, I think if you probably look at the package, it's that we're going to be offering, it's going to be actually better than what the state's going to have. Probably going to have less of an impact on the employees too, when you start looking at that point nine percent. So I think this is something that we got to do for retention of our employees that we want to keep and got to make this a great place to work. Thank you.
Thank you, member Tom.
I have a final question for Ms. Anderson. Maybe, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. Can you maybe share or clarify some of the leave options that are provided through the employee benefits? I know some municipalities or organizations provide rental leave or administrative leave for all different kinds of things. What are some of the leave options available to our employees in addition to maybe what we're looking at as a comparable package for meeting the FMLA requirement?
Yeah. So that's a good question. So all of our staff members, full-time staff members and part-time. They do accrue both paid sick leave and paid vacation leave currently. There are caps for their leaves based on their tenure with the town. And then we do offer paid fam, not, we have it for if somebody is growing their family that we are allowing. Six weeks of paid leave for due to an increase in family. So we do have that policy in place currently with that program, along with the proposed family program that we were bringing in. We do have that run concurrently with FMLA if an employee is FMLA eligible. So that does make sure that we're not letting people, I mean, people aren't going out for twenty-four weeks with protection. So we're still making sure that we have the staff that we need, have the coverage we need and making sure that our staff members can take the time. Not worry about their paycheck coming in so they can really take the time to support their new family. Or with this new benefit with the twelve weeks to really care for family members or themselves if they're injured.
Thank you for the clarification and the peace of mind.
Thanks. I don't have anything else. I'd like to seek a motion.
I move that we approve resolution number thirty dash twenty-two, a resolution declining full participation in the Colorado state-run paid family and medical leave insurance program.
I'll second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Kenny?
Yes.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Teets?
Yes.
Trusty Weekend?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Are there any reports from the town attorney?
Two weeks ago, we talked a little bit about roles and responsibilities and some updates that are becoming. I just want to let you know, watch your emails the next couple of days. I'll have a document to you then. Was hoping to get it to you before tonight's meeting, but there was a contract we've been working on that took a bit of time. So we'll have more for you soon after this meeting.
Ms. Garcia.
Since we just had Ms. Anderson up here and there was a little bit of discussion about human resources, I wanted to let you know today. Stephanie's team put together this amazing training for supervisors and managers. I have gone to trainings for supervisors and managers for probably the last twenty years. I generally fall asleep or something of the sort. It's boring. They sit, they lecture to you. But she created this really great environment where we broke up into teams and we did some really fun team building things and. I, I took pages and pages of notes and everybody else did too. So this was the leadership team that runs your water and sewer treatment plants, that runs your library, that's at town hall. And we just have this exceptional group of people that work for the town of Wellington. And I just wanted to do a shout out because. This was probably some of the best training I've ever attended. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Cool. Thank you. So we got the water. Are there any reports from the board? Start with trustee Teets.
I have, I guess, not really a report, but a request. I had reached out to Dan Sepienza about some clarification and looking at some legal documents from different municipalities. That allow OHV and golf cart driving within the city limits excluding highway. And I'd sent it out to a few border trustees and most that I sent it were in support of looking at a document like this. So I would just like to seek clarification if we could take a peek at this and have Dan come back with some different ordinances. That might be allowable to allow that access.
I have a question regarding that, if it's okay. I looked into this a long time ago because I totally want to be a golf cart community. Like I just want to like. Take a golf cart to the pool and then to wherever. So that's like one of my dreams to live in a community like that. So when I was looking at it personally, the concern was state highways. And I haven't seen your communication yet, so I don't know if that's acknowledged in it. But I would love to, given that our main drag, Main Street is a state highway and that, and the low. I can't remember what they're called, low speed vehicles, whatever that, the distinguishing for a titled. Vehicle that is a golf cart, for example.
Like OHVs.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Are not permitted on state highways. So. How does that work? Like if you're crossing the street, like all those kinds of things, I, I would love to have that clarified when we're discussing that. So that's my only hope for inclusion.
In my very minor research so far, they are absolutely not allowed to drive on state highways. That is certainly a consideration in evaluating this. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts potentially. I would want to. Have conversations with the sheriff's office, public, our public works department in streets. I mean, there, there's a lot of. A lot of departments and entities that we'd want to have some conversation with. And the state highway issue is. It goes right down the middle of town. That's a, that's a big one. So I think that's one of those issues.
And I was ready with my rain cover and everything. I was ready to go. I was going to be a trendsetter, but uh, but I'd love to make sure that we're. We're good to go and we're not sending anybody for tickets or anything.
You still have to be sixteen.
Challenges that comes up with these OHV unique, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
That comes up in these kinds of communities are noise ordinances. So I would be curious to know how. Adopting something like this would impact a noise ordinance and then where people would be able to go to get their. Vehicles tested to make sure that they aren't violating that noise ordinance.
There are a lot of questions and I think, I think trustee Teets is looking for if there's support to.
Yes.
Direct staff to be working on that.
Yeah. So I think just stick to do sport staff or not, and we can go from there. Questions could come later. I think it's a great idea. Let's, let's look into it and see what we can do. Yeah, we have your support, your support.
I got some. I went to the behavioral health committee this week. And the construction on the building on the south side of Fort Collins is really coming along good. I think they're saying in two thousand twenty-four, they're going to have to try to be open. And I know they were talking about the grants that they give, gave to the different. Mental health nonprofits and stuff. And I think it's going to end up being about two point eight million. So they do do a very valuable part. We also met with Main Street that I'm going to let Rebecca expand on that because she can expand a lot better than me. Okay. And the last thing I want to hit too is I know. A few people in our community has been taking a lot of hits here lately. One thing I am not for book banning. But I am a Christian, so I'm not afraid to say that. I want to read something here real quick. First Amendment of the United, the Constitution. The Congress shall make no laws respecting an establishment of a religion. Or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the free speech. Or the press, or the right of people peaceably to assemble what we're doing here. And to petition the government for the redress of grievances. I think that consists of petitions. That people can go out, whether I like them or not. I was a. Part of team Fort Collins back when the marijuana issue was coming through there. I think it took a couple of times before it actually passed down there. So again, you know, people worried about, you know, it passed by one vote, we should just shut up. If people in our community wants to bring it up, it's their right. So again, part of the constitution. And also too, you know, it says freedom from religion. That's I've heard people say. This says Congress should make no laws restricting religion. Okay? It doesn't say to protect us from religion. And then if you think about it too. Religion is a belief. If you look at the different beliefs around here, agnostics have a belief. BLM has a belief. You know, atheists has a belief. That's what they dictate their morality for. So again, everybody should be represented in this town. And Christians are just as much part of this town as anybody else. So we gotta. How would you say, be conscious? We got to use our common sense in the process. And you know, try, do what's good for the community. And you know, be a little considerate of everybody at that point too. And try to be a little nicer. Thank you.
It was a lot of fun to attend the ribbon cutting at the new high school with some of my fellow board members. That was a really exciting event and a once in a lifetime opportunity. And I'm so excited about our first hometown football game this Friday. So go Eagles.
Did you just steal some of the trustee Kenny's thunder there?
Sorry.
Seven o'clock at the high school. I expect you all to be there.
All right, five minutes. Trusty Kenny.
I've got lots of things, so I'm going to talk fast. Also, you can already buy tickets for the game. So. Yes, I already got mine too. I got a ten punch pass because I'm planning on being all the, all the things. So you could buy that now and then also sign up to attend this specific game. They said there was a concern on. Number of people who could do it, but I know we've worked with the county to, or excuse me, the school district to bring in extra bleachers and that kind of thing for it. So. But just in case, buy your tickets and reserve your spot right now. Thanks. And that, that link to get those are on the Wellington Middle High School page. Okay. That's the first one I have. The other one is update from the Solid Waste Policy Council. To be honest, I have a kind of a concern on the, our role within that intergovernmental agreement. I don't know if the policy council is being very effective and actually driving policy decisions. So with that said, with the support of the board, I'm going to be recommending that the policy council does an in-depth review of a few things. The first one being the strategic plan for solid waste for the county. The second one is what are the prioritized projects? And then third one is what are the terms and purpose of the intergovernmental agreement in the policy council? So with review of that, I hope to reignite the purpose and goals of that group. And hope that we carry a little bit more weight and then we can represent the needs and wants of our community. So that's, that's what I'm hoping to communicate if that's okay with everybody. Okay, great. The other thing is the Wellington Main Streets Exploratory Committee. I'm really happy to see we're making a ton of progress. And we have, again, all the right people in this group. We're starting to look at the real costs associated with potentially supporting the Wellington Main Streets as their executive director within a staff, staff position within the town. We also looked at the total realized savings. Associated with the program expenses by bringing in those kind of items into the town. Which were tentatively and quickly calculated as like fourteen thousand dollars off the bottom line of just the actual. Like operational expenses of the program, including rents, you know, printing, a few things that aren't. There's some other significant printing costs, but there's itemized items that will obviously and immediately be eliminated by staff support. We did an in-depth consideration of the memorandum of understanding and what it could include, including a very detailed roles and responsibility. Who has authority on decisions? Who is actually responsible for specific work? And how do we organize and decide what the actual goals are if that partnership is to occur so that is enforceable? And it, it matches the town, town goals. So that is something that we're looking on to how to do that. Also with consideration of the required memorandum of understanding with DOLA. And the minimum requirements to maintain our graduate level status as a Main Street program. Just to keep in mind, we were voted the best Main Street program in the entire state last year. So we got a lot of things to hold up on our end of that. So. That's one of the other things too, for this actual staff role, we're talking about specific titles, what their roles and responsibilities are. And the fact that this staff member, only a percentage of their time would be dedicated as executive director. What is the rest of their percentage of their job doing? It's in the ideas that have been developed or, you know, having a dedicated staff member for event planning. Having a dedicated staff member for economic development and retaining and supporting our existing businesses. And then with the advantages of the Main Street program, we could potentially extend the benefits and best practices essentially. That the Main Street program has to all businesses in the Wellington area. And then have that, the feet on the ground, the person who's engaging and participating with the businesses and seeing what we can do to help them. Be more prosperous. So there is some really big steps going on in this project. And I'm happy to report that back. We have a lot of work to do though, before the meeting where we expect to propose our recommendations and we again want that to be a full boat. Everything that would be necessary for that to go into action to have that prepared as a potential option or, or options to see what happens. So. The last item that I have is. Based on some significant public outrage and communication regarding recent resident inquiries and intent from a resident to pursue book banning and censoring. I feel really strongly about protecting the purpose and function of our public library. And defending the rights afforded to our citizens through the First Amendment and the Constitution. Just so you know, the mission of our library in particular is to encourage community connection and curiosity. I disagree with the goal to limit the availability of content based on religious views. And I believe that limits the religious freedoms of others. The freedom of speech spoken or written is worthy of protection with a consideration to commit and celebrate the First Amendment. I do not want to be known as a closed minded. I do not want to be known as a closed minded community that is unwilling to stand up for our first amendment rights. I think that's a very dangerous area to approach. I'm asking the board if anyone here is open to draft a resolution for consideration. To state the intent of our community to support the nature and inclusion of our public library. And in support of our community's commitment to the constitution of the United States. So I'm really just looking for any kind of support from this board to start drafting something like that, that we can bring to an agenda in the future. For consideration. So of course, not deciding right now if you're in support of it or not. But if, if you guys would be willing to let me pursue drafting a potential resolution. That would show, you know, our intent. So I was wondering if I have that support here.
We, we really haven't been presented with the request to ban or remove books though.
Yeah, but I don't think it's a bad idea to have, just have a resolution in place. Who's for it? For putting something together? Yeah, all right.
Cool. I'll pursue that. Thank you guys for your support. And then also you can buy tickets for this football game on Friday. Online and then make sure you're there. I mean, this is our first Friday night whites. I'm so excited. Also, I'll be working the concession stand for part of the game. So come see me and buy stuff that benefits our school. Thanks.
Trustee Gator?
So I had no finance meeting this week, I think. Well, no, we did two weeks ago. They finished going through the budget. So again. Two weeks ago, I didn't have a report last week because it wasn't a board meeting. So they did wrap up going through the rest of the budget and CIP. Again, did a great job on just providing great feedback and really have been. Highlighting very well, I think what we look for, for our boards of working together and people have different ideas. They share those ideas. They're able to work very well together. So just appreciate all the work from the members of our. Finance committee and then Dominic will be joining us at our work session where we go through stuff. So he'll be able to actually share input directly from that. Again, my goal with that was. I didn't want it to have to be filtered through me because obviously I'll be sharing my thoughts as a trustee. So I wanted them to be able to have their own representation there at that meeting. So appreciating the mayor and staff making that happen. So look forward to having them with us. One other thing that I did want to bring up as a thought process, I know we had looked at with the potential of being able to do something for appreciation for staff. We weren't able to make that come together. One of the things that I was thinking of is I know that we're in tight budgetary times. Instead of saying, well, hey, let's look at putting something together. Could we look at putting together some kind of, whether it be an appreciation lunch or an appreciation dinner? Where we as trustees, we reach out to our individual groups within the community and say, hey, businesses, residents, we'd like to show something of appreciation for our staff. We like to put together something where we can cater a meal, do different things like that. And put something together to really show our staff that we as a town appreciate that. So instead of just taking taxpayer dollars. Out of the budget, actually saying, hey, we are willing to step out. I know it's something I would be more than happy to do and I'd be happy to go to businesses and people I know to say, hey, would. You guys be willing to step up and do something nice for staff? So I want to see if that's something our board is in. Would approve of doing and then we can work with Ms. Garcia as finding a way to make that happen.
Our staff is incredibly worthy of all appreciation efforts. Absolutely. So I'm in favor of that. My only consideration there is that our small businesses. They are that, they are businesses. So they get hit up to sponsor, to participate, to give away free things that, you know, that they need to sell. So I, I would challenge, of course, if, if this is something we would want to sponsor. I would love to financially contribute to that, given of course, knowing the, the limits on gifting. Completely front of mind, but I, I would encourage us that rather than asking for free handouts from our businesses that we rather support them. So that was my only feedback.
I agree. So my obvious talk to businesses is I plan to financially put into this and I'll be asked businesses, hey, we'd like to do this and not say, give it to us for free. But hey, could you. Donate whatever you feel comfortable with and we'll purchase the rest of that. I know a few people I'm sure would be willing to do that. And I agree with you. It's not just give us stuff. It's hey. Let's give you some business, but also hey, if you do appreciate the work they're doing, it's something for that. So yeah.
Great idea, great idea. All in favor? Yep.
I'll chat with you more about it on our meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't have anything to report. Staff's killing it. Super stoked on the water deal. Football game Friday night. Be there. All right, having no further business, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.